We need to make 30,000, 21 to order. Raise the implications.
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for everyone that has been present tonight. We ask that you continue to guide the city council as they make decisions for the city of Vernon. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and legends, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Number one, employee request and handbook review.
Jason, what did you say? Thank you, number one. Your request. Yes, sir?
My request is to cash in my leave like I always do. If y'all are all up with it. And how many hours was it again, Jason?
Seventy-two point twenty-five hours.
Now, I know when most companies that I've worked for, you could only do forty hours a month.
We don't have enough. We've always, last year they let me do it. That's the only reason why. We've always done it.
We don't have a policy. There's not a policy at all about it.
And some companies don't do it at all. Most companies don't do it at all. Unless it's an emergency, you know, like if you have, and that's up to the company, the CEOs of the company. They say, okay, this person's got a real emergency sickness or something like that, and they will grant it. But most of the time, it's not a policy they will.
They have to do two hundred and forty a total, like their last time they worked with a company. They do a total worth about eighty-fourty this year, forty next year, forty next. It can't go over two hundred and forty.
I mean, you mean what you keep. Oh, yeah, most companies have.
And we have that in place, it's a two-hundred-and-forty cap.
Go over so many, then you have to go into a sick bank, you know, and that's the way it is on my job. Once you reach a certain point, you go into the sick bank. So, most people don't let it get back there because they don't want, because you, you know, if you put it in there, you can't get it when you leave. You can't get back. On a vacation time, you can get it. You can't get that, put it in a sick bank.
But we don't have anything yet.
Well, I have.
We don't have anything.
Somebody, I guess, had a concern. I have no problem with, we give him the full, uh, in a certain, uh, circumstances. I don't know. It was a lot more than seventy-two we paid him before, uh, the council did. We have nothing in place, but I think the concern was if he was to get fired, he don't get paid.
Right. Or sick time or anything like that.
Yeah.
This is my vacation I already got.
Yeah, it's already earned.
Yeah, I'm already earned this.
And we've done it previously, and past councils have done it.
And for other employees as well.
This is, well, how are we going to do this? How long does an employee, can I just come this, I've been here six months? A year when I get my first, can I do that?
Generally, you have to be here a certain amount of time. You get vaca- vacation time built up.
You know what I'm saying? How, is we just gonna let, you don't have no time with the city? Is, I think there needs to be some kind of cap here.
That's why we need to look at that handbook a little bit more closely.
You know, where it says, you've been with the city two years, you can do this, or you didn't, you know, it's just, well, whatever. Because if somebody just gets their, when do we give them vacation?
After one year of service? That's what I'm saying, after one year.
Yeah, one week after that.
I see both sides. I see where Ms. Winn, and I guess Ms. Winn had the question on this topic. But we have in the past, and, uh, and since we don't, which I don't have a problem with it this time, but we do need to look at it.
That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with it right now, since we've already done it and we've been doing it. But I'm just saying, this is something we need to look into as a council. That's my thing. We just need to look into making it a policy. How, some type of policy.
There's, I think there's a couple of things in, in here that we need to change.
Oh, no, I see some that we need to change. So, we need to do it, probably have a workshop, and go into this, um, employee's handbook, go into it, insulate and see.
Do we want to do a special workshop just for that?
No.
Okay.
Just add a workshop.
That the June workshop?
Just do, I mean, we have a workshop. Sometimes when we have a workshop, we don't have that much. And every council member just highlight what you think needs to, like they just said, needs to come out. And we can discuss it, or needs to be added, and we can discuss.
Or reworded.
Or reworded, like you said.
Well, and we've all got a fresh new copy of this.
Yeah, of it now, entirely, right?
Yes, ma'am, and that's.
Okay. So, uh, motion to approve Jason's request for seventy-two point two-five hours of vacation time?
I made the motion, please.
I'm sorry.
All in favor? Opposed? Next to carry. Number two, street and mortar and sewer department budgets.
Okay, so I provided everybody with both, the water sewer and the street department budget. Um, as is on the left, that is what has been budgeted. On the right, it's what the projections looking for towards the end of the year. If they stay the same, if they stay as they are right now.
The budget?
The budget. What we are looking at on the third page is possibly increasing some salaries. And I have made some suggestions for possibly, um, if we can hire a temporary person right now, full-time. That way, there's no F R S for now, and no insurance. At an increase rate.
And temporarys for six months?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
What would that person be able to move into a full-time position if we have the money?
Yes, ma'am. That'll put us into the next budget year, so we can definitely budget for that next year.
So is that on top of the full-time that we discussed advertising?
No. None of it.
Just a temporary position?
Just a temporary position. That could turn full-time next fiscal year.
And is that with, given the other two positions are raised?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that in that?
Now, do you, how does everybody feel about hiring, uh, an extra person? Instead of just hiring the one person, hiring two people? Because the increase of grasses is going to be cut, the increase of, basically, everything is going on.
Well, it's always more in the summer. I mean, this time of year, it, we're, we've always got more work for the guys.
That's why we get our extra, we usually don't have the full-time person. So that's why we're getting an extra full-time person to help them out with the moving. You know, because I know little things come up, but, um, basically, in the summertime, that's their job. You know what I mean? That's what they do. They have so much of that grass to cut and mow. You know, but I think another fourth, how many, Jason, what do you have? Just you and Chad?
I got me and Chad, the two.
As of today?
As of today.
But we, we did have, we did have two full-time for, just for street.
That's what I'm saying. We had two full-time, but now we only got one full-time.
Jason got a full-time job with that sewer plant over there. And then them two, whenever Chad and another person, that's, that's a lot on, on just two people.
Well, we've got, we've got a lot of stuff that needs doing around town, too.
That's right.
But we could use the person for, just like the ditches not being cleaned out, that's holding the mosquitoes, and just little things like that.
Well, that's what I was asking. Are we, are we talking about a temporary on top of advertising for a full-time?
Just full-time temporary, unless you guys want me to advertise for a temporary part-time position as well. And then looking at that again next year.
I thought we'd already discussed, uh, advertising for a full-time.
But that was without an increase.
That was without an increase. So now you're talking about if we increase what we have, then we can, we've, at this time.
We can definitely do the full-time.
Because we're not, if we do it temporarily, we're not doing any benefits.
Right.
That's what she's saying. So that will pay, help pay for the increase.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was trying to clarify, was we're talking about one more full-time and a ten, or just a ten?
Just a ten.
Until the budget.
Until that person comes out. Full-time temp.
We can do full-time temp, yes.
Full-time temp.
Okay, so one person instead of two, is what it is?
Right.
Yeah, until the budget.
Until the budget.
The problem is, and we all know, we're going to have to do some pay increases to keep anybody. Uh, everybody is.
That's the reason why Taylor left. He had no choice.
That's the main, main reason. And then it's going to come following the budget. You know, uh, we're going to have to look at the budget hard on a lot of things when it comes back around.
Or to compete for sixteen dollars an hour.
Well, we're not.
We can't.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a choice.
Six hundred dollars a week, I mean.
If you want somebody to work.
That's about.
That's everywhere.
Six hundred a week, six hundred a week.
You ride by these places and they're telling you, they got a sign out there. I think it's Popeye has from eleven to sixteen or something like that in front of their place.
Sam's is seventeen.
And that's what I'm saying. They got all these signs, so I mean.
We're going to have.
Walmart cart pushers are making fourteen, I'm pretty sure, at the beach, and that's all they do.
Hour fifteen, we can't find another one, so.
So that's what I'm saying.
And there are, there are employers right now offering longevity bonuses. For anybody to stay six months, you'll get five thousand dollar bonus.
Well, we need to take care of who we got first, and then.
Yes, absolutely.
And then we're worried about the rest of that thing, so.
Do we have any money now for, so we're hiring a temporary full-time? But is there any money for also temporary part-time?
Yes, there is.
So that we can have two people, a full-time and a part-time?
Yes.
At least through the, I mean, through September? And that, that's what I'd like to see if we can do that.
Okay, so where are we at as far as being able to do that, plus give who we have a raise?
Right now, as things stood at April thirty, if the end-of-year projection was a hundred and five thousand dollars. There's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the budget. With the increase to the one we have and the temporary that we would, the two temporaries we hire, it would be like four thousand dollars. So it's covered. And that would be giving Chad up to thirteen dollars an hour, and the two, um, temporaries, twelve dollars an hour.
I don't think you're going to get nobody, is it?
I don't either. When's our workshop?
June third?
Which is, not too bad.
Second is Tuesday. I'm worried, yeah.
See, my thing is, is I think if we hire anybody, they shouldn't make what he makes.
No.
I mean, because you've been here.
Been here every year.
So that's why we have to look at that, because you cannot bring a person off the street here and make.
June the seventh is our workshop, I'm sorry.
So we have.
Well, and June third?
June the seventh.
Seven.
I have to wait and.
So what are we going to do in the meantime as far as advertising for him?
Exactly.
I don't have, I'd go ahead and advertise. That's me now.
But if we hire somebody, I gotta have a rate of pay.
You gotta have a rate of pay.
And that's one thing that we're discussing tonight.
We have contract with the state to move.
I can't get anybody for twenty, so I don't know what they.
That was the person I called, that asked me about a job, works at Walmart right now. And she said, I'll stay here for a hundred dollars an hour. I started shows.
I've been working my way to like.
So, we a bad chick. And the other one knows all unemployment right now, and they're drawing a six hundred a week.
Right.
Well, that's, that's taking wrong, because they, as long as laws are.
That's part of the problem why people can't find help is because of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Why would they?
So the temporary hip's going to be twelve dollars an hour?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's what I figured out.
Well, the only thing we can do is, if nobody applies, then we know at that workshop, we need to, we make this, don't we?
Well, and on that, but we still have the situation of not bringing somebody in over the top of the employee that we already have.
That's what I'm saying.
But we can always.
Back pay the pre-seeds.
We can always back pay.
That's right. We can, we can, we can take.
Chad. The thing is, we need to look at what we got to work with, the rest of the budget.
Yeah.
And, uh, even Jason, you know, the, the city's going to have to sooner or later. Our guys are going to have to get paid for your simple thing, all of them, but we ain't going to keep them. You know, uh, I don't know if Jason's going to work, but anyway, it's hard to work for thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour.
Well, what they done do, because I've seen what they do, and I.
I don't think, ma'am.
I don't think, don't, I don't think.
Anybody else that was going to probably work with Jason.
That's what I'm saying, because I have really seen what they do, and it's, it's, it's not a good picture.
Look, all I got to say is God bless them.
Me too, because I, it's not a pretty picture. Sometimes it's not pretty at all.
I'm not staying in that poop for fifteen.
That's what I'm saying, and it's not pretty.
Okay, so what do we want to do? We want to agree to not to advertise at twelve and then revisit at the workshop to get them the money that they need?
That's what I'd do. Uh, I'd spend part of the workshop on, on their, all our employees. Look at their pay, because, because this coming, none of them went to coming to fifteen, sooner or later. Uh, the city's going, we don't have to pay them, you know, simple as that. I know, you know, in discussing workshop, all of them got the, one of the best insurance, you know? Eight, about nine hundred something a month, they get paid, but still, when you've got a young person like the one we just lost, really, it's nothing to him, you know, unless he seriously falls in a hole or something, or somebody hits him or something like that. You know, he ain't planning on getting hurt, none of us are, but it happens. But they don't look at the insurance doings.
Because you pay the insurance.
But still.
We would, being older.
When you advertise for twelve, that job, I'll be shocked if somebody puts in four, you know, that's my opinion.
They need to put on there about the insurance.
No, they can't, if they're temporary.
No, because they're temporary. They can't get insurance.
I tell people, it's state retirement. It, you know, we got state retire, I tell them.
Well, they have that.
And they're like, well, why, why would I leave fifteen bucks an hour to go make eleven with state retirement? Who cares?
But here's another thing, what job you know that pays your insurance? Your medical?
Yeah.
It's not very many, I can tell you that.
One doesn't. They don't have.
Okay, so we're moving this to the workshop?
Yes.
But you're going to advertise, you're going to go ahead and.
With that, with that position.
For both, right? Full-time and part-time?
All right, number three, schools request to prevent it, renovate the track and tennis courts. Miss Laurie Simmons?
I want it, and so you come in.
I seen her taking pictures. I seen her taking pictures out here.
All right, um, I don't know if you guys have seen on the news, we've had a tennis team here at Vernon High School for the last five years. We started out practicing on the courts back here five years ago with a half-written net. And now I see there aren't even nets there, you know, anymore. We have a court behind the school, but it's, it floods. And if we, we have an engineer come out and look at it on Monday, and adding asphalt to anything will make our weight room flood even more than it does when it rains. So really, it really isn't viable for us to put courts behind the school. So we started looking, as we, as a tennis team, we have a, a group out of Tallahassee that kind of took us under their wing when they found out that we were driving to another county to practice in Bonneville. And even saw the courts that we were practicing on Bonneville, they want to get us tennis courts. And so they sent a paving company, Mitchell Paving, out of Tallahassee. They came to see us and they looked at behind the school. They're, um, at this time, they're talking about donating paving, six tennis courts for us. But I, because we can't do it behind the school, I called Mr. Rock, I called Ms. Hodges, and, you know, asked them about the area back here, if it would be possible to put, you know, four to six tennis courts. Looking this morning, it looks like, you know, you, we could put four courts in the middle of that track, where it's still, the track would still be viable. The, the fencing around the two courts is still in excellent shape. And what I'm proposing with the school, but the school can't commit to anything at this time until I get the proposal from Mitchell and get the approval from you guys, just to go ahead and look at getting drawings and seeing what we could do back there. Um, the school can't commit to what they would, you know, do, but it looks like we're going to have the asphalt donated, and we need fencing and lining, and I'm hoping that the school will come forward with that. And that's kind of what they were going to do before, but they can't really commit to anything until we say we actually have somewhere to put some courts and do some designing. So that's why I was here, to see if, you know, we could go forward, but look at that, if you guys were open to that, at least putting four courts. The reason we need four is we cannot host home matches without four courts. That's the minimum amount. And even with four courts, it makes it hard, um, until the time changes, because you got to have courts that are lit. If you don't have six, because you've got five singles and girls, five singles for boys, and then you have four doubles matches that you have to play, and you got to play them before dark. And with, you know, starting a match at three o'clock in the afternoon, a lot of times you don't get done before dark. So having six courts would make it where we could get that, you know, done. So that's kind of my request, is just to see if it's viable for you guys, if that's something, you know, that we could work towards. My thought was, if we got the courts paved, that maybe the paving company, I can work with them and have them pay, repave that track, because I know that, that's something that people walk on and, you know, like to use. And I know there's some spots there that have sunk down and things.
I'm a hundred percent for supplying something for our kids.
I am too. I told Lori, great idea. The school already uses a sports playground and shade ground. So it'll bring the city and the Washington County school system closer.
And it'll bring people to Vernon for the, for the home.
They don't have nothing, like I was telling Miss Lori, but my concern was, at one time, before the new council come on, we had a grant for, and Tracy knows, I think, for, uh, playground equipment back there. He was supposed to win in, uh, that got, the funds got moved to somewhere else, I think it was. But anyway, uh, like I was telling her, we just had to get the survey, it just got surveyed, so we got it straightened out. But other than that, I think there's one low spot in the track that needs to be fixed if they do repave it, that holds water. Uh, but I hadn't been out there now. I hadn't in a while, but, uh, that's why I invited her. I told her, I didn't know Tracy could get her in tonight.
Yeah, I didn't either. It was really quick last night. And we, and so when I talked to Mr. Newsom, Kyle Newsom, who's our building and maintenance person, this one, he was like, that's really quick. The school can't commit to something because you, they've got to have their school board meeting and approve things. But they just wanted to make sure that we could go ahead and look at designing something and come back to you and say, hey, this is what we've come up with. Will this work for you guys? Is this something that you're, you know, willing to let us do?
Is this going to fit with the splash pack that we're beating to the county?
That's not going there.
It's not Hunter's Park.
It's going to Hunter's Park.
And two, and I didn't tell her, y'all know, kind of, we're trying to get a grant to redo the gym and the community center. So eventually, the city gets that grant, all of that will be redone, so, you know, fit right back in, back like it used to.
And we've also talked about trying to get a grant to do something else out of the track, maybe some lighting, some vehicles.
So maybe we can get all that back fixed, you know, with grants and plus the paper, you know, the, uh, y'all know.
Yeah, we've already gotten a grant that we've been approved for from the USTA. I applied for four. We got the first one, which is twenty-five hundred dollars for equipment, which we got posts and nets. The posts on those courts, when I took pictures of them and sent them, they feel that they can probably, you know, work with those. It's just the nets, getting new nets, and if we added courts, would we have posts and nets to put up there? And my only concern was bathrooms for when we host matches, and that's something that we could, you know, just so that there's a bathroom for somebody to use at some point, but that would be down the road. We'll design, you know, come up with some kind of design.
Come into the community center and use the bathroom.
That's what, then that's what I figured, that there would be something there.
My door is restroom.
Are we going to leave that, the world?
We could get porta potties until we get a grant.
Right, or something, yeah. But that's the thing, is we designed something that, uh, this group out of Tallahassee is willing to work with us to help us design something. It's, um, a group at Golden Eagle Country Club, and that's, they're just philanthropists. And they took pity on us and, and want to help us. I mean, they, they really did. They took pity on us.
I'm glad they are.
Well, they sent us two hundred and fifty-dollar tennis rackets, twelve of them for the team, and, and, and uniforms and all kinds of stuff. So, um, I just feel that this would be something for the community, especially, um, we can have tennis lessons at some point. It just, it will add to the recreation department, you know, and the offerings, because not all kids want to play football and baseball and softball. They just don't. That gives them something else to do.
And, and also the track, if we can make it usable again, the area, we have a track team that has nowhere to run. And so that could also, we could host, or the school could also host there.
Well, and, you know, we, we use a ball field and all, so I don't have a problem helping out at all. I say, for my part, I'll let, see what you can come and bring it back to us.
Appreciate it, and we'll come back to you with some kind of design. And, um, the school wanted the, the group out of Tallahassee, that whatever they donated will be, like the paving or whatever, will be donated to the school, to, to the city, rather than the school, since you guys own the property. And they were fine with that, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yep, thanks for having us.
And we get in free, right?
As long as you're working in concession stand, that'll be on the back of a pickup truck.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll do concessions.
We don't have to pay anything a week for that. No.
No, tennis matches are free.
I should get in free. Anyway, I'm going to the golf clubs a couple of years ago.
Hey, that was four years ago. They're worn out now.
Number four, the awning at the old bandroom.
I saw that.
So yes, yesterday, um, we actually noticed this, this nice mess. That is concrete that's up there. It's not plywood. So if somebody were to walk under it when it cracks and falls, the city's going to have a heap of mess, basically.
I thought they were going to tear it down on us, doing that.
It's not concrete, ain't that plaster? No, I mean.
It's a concrete board.
It's extremely heavy, but at one time, I know that Gary Owens was talking about tearing down the bandroom.
Bye, baby.
Yeah, I know where the bandroom is. What I'm saying, the bandroom's not in, it's about a shake, that's the one that we demoed.
No, it is not nearly that bad.
It was, that's called a library. I always thought that was the library. Back when I was a student. It wasn't a man's library. Bandroom was out there.
This is the library in, you know, a little newer times.
But anyway, I know where you're talking about, because I went out there. But, uh, I call that the library, but anyway.
Well, that building out in there.
Well, but the, I mean, the building could possibly be used, like we talked about, doing with the newest one out here. But it's the awning is the situation around town, not the building itself.
The building's pretty bad.
It is. It doesn't matter.
It's a, this is a.
It's getting mad.
This is a mud pit.
I can't even tell you the last time it's been used. I don't think.
Back when, uh, when we had the bees, when me and Bud all dealt with the bees. I was, if y'all were, Joey, y'all were here when we dealt with the bees.
Big old hive like that out there.
Yeah, that's the last time we been in there, and that's been two years ago. We talking about this issue right here, but at the front door there, it's about to cave in. When that's, I know this is a safety issue, but once somebody walks in that front door and falls through up there, guys.
Yeah, we, we really need a foundation team to come.
We climbed down there and put jacks on there at one time, and they.
Um, not just one.
Oh, tell my parents. Yeah, but a foundation, but a foundation company comes and they pour in concrete, lay it under there. And then they put a metal, that's what they had doing our house up in the tree. So what are we doing about this?
All jokes aside, I went out there. I happened to be here, and I went out. It's bad. And I told, I would put Jason or Chad up on the ladder, tearing it down. It's above your head, ten or twelve foot, and it's concrete. I don't know why they put concrete up there. I don't know, but it was concrete.
It's stuck though.
It's stuck though. It's concrete, stuck though.
Yeah, I expect.
So, you know, you could easily just say Chad up on the ladder, eight, nine foot up there, and he grabbed a piece of it, and he thinks it's going to be a foot or two, it might be ten foot, knocking it off the ladder and hurt our employee. What I did, I, I asked Tracy about the budget, if we had a budget, tear the building down, go ahead and get it. And, uh, she said we did.
Well, it's not in the budget, but we have the money for it.
We got the money. She's got the money to remove the building, but safety concerns mine. People walked that hallway. I had Jason and them to rope it off. You know, if we ain't going to ever use the building or nothing, we need to see the workshop.
It's no good inside. It's, it's, it's bad.
My question is, that awning runs from that building all the way back to the second hall?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It does.
So. I told Tracy, we was fine if, once we had touched the second hall right now, the haunted hall.
Because they do use that whenever they use the haunted hallway, they have people run through there.
Yeah.
Well, there's two awnings right there. It actually, where the band heads, it stops and starts a different, whole different type of awning.
So now.
This top is only halfway.
It's only right, it's only right from the ban.
So we just take that out in the building.
Yeah.
But still, we need to find the money, while we're finding the money for that, to have a foundation company come jack this floor up in the front.
VJ.
While we're.
Did you want me to check with that grant? Because I'll have to get an architect out here. You know, put it down here.
It, Ms. Eileen, you've seen it happen.
Yeah, but I thought it, I hadn't noticed lately. I thought it was, it was big.
It was at one time, and that failed.
It's bad.
So we have to have an architect come out here?
To get a grant to fix it, yes.
Well, we're pretty sure that it's the, the, the beam.
It's going to lead to, yeah.
It's the beam, yeah. Well, we done, back when Bud was here, we climbed underneath there, and they, we put jacks on there, there's four or five jacks on there, and they just failed. We put block, the water runs through there is the problem, and it was washing it out. But I don't want to climb up there unless I have to.
No, because it may fall. No, that's not your.
So it's just that, it's that one section that they're running one on, all the way across the hall, the ceiling?
I think there might be another section back where, um, yeah, I can remember, it's like the lady. the lady's there. The council on age. In the very back against the wall, there's, you could see a little bit back there too.
So the next step is to get, to hire an engineer to come out?
Architect.
An architect. And tell us what, how much.
How much it's gonna cost?
And then we have to get somebody else to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
What about the, um?
Well, what about one of those jacking company, like Ray Jack or something?
Well, that, Alpha Foundation's the one that came out to our house and they poured concrete slant and they put a steel beam over there.
Can't you get just a jack company?
We could, but we can't get a grant by doing that.
Well, no, but by the time we go through all the hoops of paying to have somebody come out here and do that, it may save us to see, get a price on what we can pay them for.
That's what I'm saying. How much would it cost for?
Get an estimation.
You need to do that from the north, each time.
But, yeah, that's the worst part, at least. I, I don't think it'll be that bad if we get.
It's not bad. It's just one.
You get an architect or engineer out here.
We will make some money.
By the time we do all that, get a plan, it's gonna be on the ground out there, yeah.
Well, it, it, it may be ten thousand dollars to jack, for them to do that.
What?
That hole.
Fix, um, issue. I doubt that. I don't think so. Well, we can get, have somebody come out and look at it and get estimates.
Get some estimates and then we'll know what we're dealing with and where we have to go.
What about the estuas, um, painting of the civic city?
I haven't received any yet, any, anymore. But it was just advertised this week.
So you have that workshop?
Officially, it was advertised.
Yes, we, yes. I've received a couple of phone calls, but nobody's shown up yet.
So have we, so what are we gonna do about the awning in the building?
See, about there, damn.
We're gonna get some prices, some.
And buy a whole thing down.
That's my recommendation. I'd make a recommendation to get the council to same thing. Get prices. Tracy can figure out how much money the city does have, cause I don't know what it's gonna cost to fix this wall.
No, and.
And we'll have prices on the, tearing the building down, prices on fixing this wall, prices on painting the, uh, community center.
It might not hurt to get a separate price to tear, get rid of the awning first in case we don't have the money to tear down the building.
That has to be done.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, this isn't anything that we have to vote on if we're all in agreement of for her to get estimates on.
No.
So. Tracy, did you hear that?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay.
All right, well, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.[1793.61]